Hello, Board Call, please.
Freeholders, Duppy, here.
James, here.
Sarah, here.
Four, here.
Laura, your Deputy Director Bartlet, here.
Right, Pat.
Here. So we're gonna start our conference agenda. We have a very exciting conference agenda tonight. We're making brief presentations to some outstanding members of our community. In addition to that, we're also going to have our introduction of our budget. So at this point, I'm gonna turn over our conference agenda to our administrators.
There's no-
Thank you, Director. First on the agenda is a presentation and proclamation to the students of the Passaic County Technical Institute. February is National Career Technical Education Month nationwide, and we are recognizing here in Passaic County, Frail LaZara, and we're gonna make the presentation. We have Gerald Winter.
Here.
Where are you?
Right here.
I hear you right there, everyone. See you later. Ah, there you are. I thought you were one of those students.
Hi, I'm a student. Well, I have a distinct honor presented as proclamation. I could be happier. I've been an educator for 25 years, and standing here with you and the kids of PCTI, a school that is second to none, I know that, and you guys should be awfully proud of yourselves. You know, there's nothing better than that education. Not only do you learn, you're both information, but you do hands-on things. And I bet everyone who's sitting here before us tonight does that, right? You're deeply involved with different departments that are up there. I'm going to present this proclamation to you, and I'm hoping that you can give us a little bit of benefit too, once I'm done on what the kids are doing up there. So with that, here with me, I'm gonna read this all right. Whereas, the month of February 2016 is celebrated nationally as Career and Technical Education Month, and whereas 21st Century Career and Technical Education Programs link rigorous academics, technical knowledge, real-world experiences, and college-level learning to help students develop career-ready skills and prepare them for post-secondary education with a clear career focus. And whereas, Passaic County Technical Institute is the largest career and technical high school in the state that provides a wide range of career and technical education programs for more than 4,400 secondary and adult students who reside in Passaic County, expanding their individual opportunities and meeting the current and future workforce needs of Passaic County employers. And whereas, the recent accomplishments by the district and its students in both academics and CTE programs, 99% graduation rate, state and national honors, state football champions, and other achievements including first, second, and third place awards in Skills USA and HOSA state and regional competitions, county mock trial champions, performance arts awards for artistic merit, leadership and academic achievement, numerous community service initiatives, and memorable patriotic commemorations throughout the year, bronze school designation from U.S. News &amp; World Report as one of the best high schools in the nation. Congratulations. Blue Star School in financial literacy, Consumer Bowl Awards, Council of the County Award, golf award for NJROTC competitions, and Pro Start Colino State Champions. And whereas, the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders takes great pride in the success demonstrated by the students of the Passaic County Vocational Technical Schools District. And whereas, the participation of local employers as county vocational technical school business partners is a key element in the success of 21st century career and technical education programs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of Passaic County that the month of February 2016 is designated as Career and Technical Education Month in Passaic County, and this board encourages students, parents, and other citizens of the county to learn more about career and technical education, Passaic County's vocational technical school programs, and the well-paid career pathways that can be launched with an industry credential and/or a technical degree. And be it further resolved that the Passaic County employers are encouraged to become active partners with vocational technical schools to align curriculum with their workforce needs and provide meaningful, work-based learning opportunities to students. I congratulate you all. Congratulations. If you would just, if you could just explain what the program is.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I wish I had something to read from, but you know what? Those students that you were speaking about, the best of the best are sitting right before you. Those students in front of you know we're not Publisher Clearinghouse. We are Skills USA, a national organization that is dedicated to the excellence of any vocation. We have the Pro Start team members here who have just won. Would you please stand up? And the other students in front of you, as a combination of our Skills USA state officer, Krishad, would you stand up, please? He represents us with state. And those students who represent us on campus are always Skills USA. Would you please stand up? Students who are going and competing statewide to be the best of the best in the state of New Jersey, and those who do win will be going to Kansas City. Oh, yeah. No, will be going to Kentucky. Will be going to Louisville, Kentucky, to compete nationally, which we have had several national winners. Could you please, everyone, sit down and let me show them the national winners? Welcome to the winner in video TV productions. And Annabelle, next to her, was the national winner for preschool teaching, preschool education. The school, even to be a teacher, in terms of student, I will always be a student. Because without me wanting to be a student, I couldn't do anything for them. Thank you so much.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Can you guys go get your- come on.
Come on, keep them all the way down. All the way down.
Like I told you, one of the-
Did you get the tip?
No.
All right, Director. Next on the agenda is a presentation and proclamation to Carl Quaza. Carl has served many, many years on our Passaic County Agricultural Development Board. And St. Carl would be here with us this evening. We have Skip Bartlet here, who is President of the Board. He's going to accept the proclamation. Frail LaZara is going to make the presentation, so Carl is gonna go.
So hard act to follow, I know. Yeah, right. Let me just, proclamation. My pleasure, my honor. Tell Mr. Quaza, I said the graduation, we wish him all the best. Whereas, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic is desirous of recognizing Carl J. Quaza for his service in the County of Passaic Agricultural Development Board, CAB. And whereas, the CAB is an entity authorized by the State Agricultural Retention and Development Act 1983 that established New Jersey's farm land presentation program, which program aims to strengthen the agricultural industry, preserve important farmlands, thereby enhancing New Jersey's economy and quality of life. Whereas, Carl J. Quaza was appointed to the Board at its inception and served as its chairman until his resignation in 2015. Whereas, Carl J. Quaza has helped to preserve and enhance six farm parcels in Passaic County, enhancing their viability in accordance with the agricultural retention and development programs cast in the courts as authorized by the Act. And whereas, Carl J. Quaza has championed the county's architectural preservation program, he has also guided the Board through several agricultural mediations, using his professional, using the professional staff, and partnering with agencies through successful public conflict resolution processes. Whereas, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic like to express its gratitude and appreciation to Carl by recognizing him for his committed and dedicated service to the citizens of the County of Passaic during his long and outstanding tenure as a member and Chair of the CAB, in helping keep farms viable, farmers on the farm, preserving the agricultural heritage of the county. That's my favorite part. They all know this. It's like a Wizard of Oz. Now therefore, be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders. You can laugh, it's okay. I can get away with it. We publicly acknowledge this Carl J. Quaza for the significant contributions he has made in the time, effort, and energy which is unselfishly devoted to the citizens of the County of Passaic. Be it further proclaimed that this Board, which is Carl, continue to help happiness succeed. We want you all the best. Have some more.
Please extend our thanks and appreciation to Carl. Well, you still vote my home, Carl, many years ago. This is very good. Next on the agenda is a presentation of our continuation of our Passaic County Business Appreciation Awards, and we are honored here this evening to have Mario's Autobody from the city of Patterson here. We have their owner and operator, Mario Tomalillo. Frail LaZara is going to make the presentation.
Before I read the proclamation, I just want to comment a little bit about what this business, what this company represents. Our nation is built by a number of very large companies that we hear about every day in the news papers, whether it's GE, whether it's Ford, General Motors. But the economic engine of this country, and the value of this country, and the strength of this country, is built by people like Classic Autobody. People that employ one, two, three dozen employees and provide not only for their families, but provide for the families of their employees, not to mention the fact that they're in Passaic County, which we're very proud of. So I want to thank you, first of all, for what you do and what you mean to Passaic County. Whereas, the County, the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders is committed to maintaining and improving the quality of life for its business community, ensuring access to capital, excellent transportation routes, and an educated, skilled labor workforce. The Board is particularly proud of its business community and its accomplishments, and as such desires to honor and promote Mario's Classic Autobody. Mario Tomalillo, did I say that right?
Very good.
Has owned and operated Mario's Classic Autobody for 22 years, bringing his 42 years of experience in the collision repair industry to the company, and has recently been joined by his daughter, Adriana. The mission of the company is to provide quality collision repair in an honorable and ethical manner. Within with prompt timeframes, excellent customer service, the company assists over 1,100 customers annually. The company now employs a staff of 14 in their 10,000-square-foot facility, equipped with a well-built downdraft spray booth, Carlinor Quick 42 Spray Machine, Carlinor Bench, Carlotronics Measuring System, Carlot Soft Vision, ProSpot, Techna, and two Millimatic welders. That's a mouthful. Sickens Paint with a mixing system and PPG, line and equipment, air conditioning charge including CCC1 pathways with digital imaging. I couldn't be the kid to tell you what all that stuff is, but I'm pretty good at it. Mario's Classic Autobody has a direct repair business relationship with over 10 private insurance companies, and it has numerous government and fleet accounts. Mario's Classic Autobody was awarded to William Patterson University Small Business Development Center Success Award for 2014. Mario's Classic Autobody was awarded to Passaic County Green Building Award in 2015 for their use of low solvent emission paint that utilizes only Sickens Auto-Wave Waterborne Base Coat Paint, reducing solvent emissions by 85% while maintaining quality and cost effectiveness. Mr. Tomalillo plays an active role in the community and is a Patterson Bourbon Enterprise Zone Commissioner. He also volunteers his time at the Our Lady of Visitation Church in his hometown of Corrinas. Mario Tomalillo is proud to acknowledge that his company provides the best collision repair service in the industry in the northern New Jersey area, and embraces his model, make the classic choice. Very good. Mario's Classic Autobody has demonstrated its commitment to the County of Passaic through its employment of local residents and continued reinvestment in their company and their strong leadership. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that hereby publicly presents Passaic County Business Appreciation Award to Mario's Classic Autobody for its continued commitment to the community. Be it further proclaimed that this Board extends its sincere best wishes to Mario for its consistent, continued-
I think you've covered me quite well, I'd like to say. But my words are gonna be for these young people. In the last six years or so, I've had the pleasure of having four of your students, and I have two at this moment working for us. And the one individual, he graduated, he's working with us, he's going to college, and he comes by us to earn, to buy his books, to do what he's gotta do. What a great reflection on the teachers, the parents. So it's not all about me. It's the future. So with that in mind, I'll thank all you, and-
Next on our agenda, we're actually gonna have a presentation of our introduction of our county budget. It's not the most exciting thing in the world, and I'm gonna offer and extend the opportunity for students who have to go to school tomorrow, if you'd like to leave now if you can, or you can wait, here's the budget presentation. Oh, awesome. Okay, great. Tony, you got until seven to do a budget presentation. We'll be done before you. And while our administrators are setting up the presentation, again, I just wanted to, I wanted to commend the outstanding job of our students at Passaic County Tech, and the job of our teachers, because guys are really doing some great work up there. I had the opportunity to have lunch there yesterday, in which I got served a shake technique by some great students who, you know, prepared an excellent meal. I think I had steak, what was it, New York strip steak? And I had, what did I have for dessert? Pretty good dessert. I didn't do the two parpa, that's two parpa for me. No, creme brulee, I had a creme brulee. Very nice, good job. That was you?
Yeah. How about that circus?
The circus was awesome. Just kiss a girl. Oh, and I got some popcorn. Tony got some popcorn, and you guys are gonna have to work a little bit harder to get some of my colleagues to get some popcorn too. But just to let you know, here's the list, guys, okay? It's coming around.
Does everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, good evening, freeholders, and as the Director said, tonight we have the introduction of our 2016 cap rate. I want to thank the Freeholder Budget Committee, which chaired by Frail LaZara, Frail Bartlet was on it, as well as Director Best, Director, for your hard work on this. I want to thank my team up here, Deputy Administrator Matt Jordan, our CFO, Judge Cahill, and our county owner, Steve Woolcox. Most of all, I really do want to take the opportunity, because I tend to forget, but to thank all of my department heads behind me, who really make this job a lot easier. Over the years, they've come accustomed that these are difficult times, and they need to figure out ways to perform their duties to the level that we all expect them to do it with not a whole lot more money. And they really have risen to that occasion, so if we could, my department heads want to stand up, just take a little bow, and I thank you very much for- So there are two action items on the agenda this evening. The first is the motions to adopt on first reading, 2016 cap rate, which would see the cap rate. So for the benefit, I know we have Frail LaZara, who is going through her first budget process. The rest of you have been through this, but the pressure courses are never harmful. So I'm gonna ask Steve Woolcox just to talk about that, explain it, if you have any questions. If you have any questions.
Yeah, hold, so you'll have to read on a microphone. The resolution for the cap of 2016 is a pro forma resolution that's done every year. Every year, the state, the Division of Government Services, sets what the cap rate will be for that particular year. This year, the cap rate is zero. The law provides that by, for counties, by resolution, you can increase that to the max of 3.5%. And all that does is allow you the flexibility of having a cap bank. And by the way, this is related to 1977 cap, not 2010 cap. So it just allows the county to raise the cap by the max 3.5%. Not necessarily, you can use that this year, but have a cap bank for future years. If you don't do this resolution, then you lose your cap banks, not just for this year, but for the previous years as well. As something that's done, I would say, almost 100% of counties, municipal governments, and the state, it's a pro forma tax bank, it just gives you a better tool down the road.
Thank you.
Any questions on that before I start my presentation? So one of the questions I know that freeholders always receive, as well as myself, is, you know, what do county tax dollars go towards? And these are just some of the things that we highlight each and every year. The County of Passaic maintains 533 winning miles of roads, 350 bridges and culverts, which are obviously what is our economic competitiveness. The upkeep of 13 Passaic County parks, historic sites and preservation, will afford 1,000 acres of open space. We are charged with a very large duty of public safety. We have our Passaic County Prosecutor's Office, our Sheriff's Department, which is not only control, it's also courthouse security, and the biggest of the four is our county jail. And the Passaic County judiciary, which is really part of that security that I just spoke about, the Sheriff. But also, to the judiciary, we also have to maintain all the courthouses. So you'll remember many years ago that the employees were turned over to the state, but everything else remained in county obligation. So we have to secure the courthouses, as well as maintain and keep the courthouses. We provide very many services, human services, our seniors, our veterans, our disabled, our indigents. Many people don't realize that if an indigent person should die in the streets, that the county is responsible to properly bury that person. If there is a required autopsy in any situation that law enforcement may run across, counties are also responsible to pay for that as well. So there's always a lot of, you know, little nuances in county government that I think the average taxpayer doesn't realize, and the county government does provide. And then, of course, we are always very proud of our two educational institutions. Some of the folks behind me, Passaic County Vocational School, and our Passaic County Community College, both of which are heart and funded by county tax dollars. So this slide shows the areas of the budget this year. Overall, we have a reduction in the county spending of $680,535. You'll see that the areas in black are increases in those particular areas, and the ones in red, obviously, are decreases over last year's appropriation. So you'll talk about some of the decreases. Our correctional facility, our jail, we just talked about, had a reduction of $812,000. And I might add, that would have been larger. We have spoken about this many times, but last year and part of this year, we had one inmate in the jail that was paid certain medication because of his illness that cost the county $10,000 a week. And in part, the decreases would have been more if not for the fact that we had to account for that in this year's budget as well. So I commend the Sheriff and his staff for doing a great job of controlling costs there. You'll see that our Parks and Recreation is down slightly, $20,000. The classified portion of the budget is down $200,000. We have talked in prior years, and this is the first year that we're seeing in part the reduction of debt service. So this was the smaller year. Next year will be a much larger decrease in debt service. And then our deferred charges and statutory expenditures is a reduction of $7 million. Mostly that was due to the fact that we didn't have an emergency healthcare this year, as well as last year, if you recall, we had the arrears pension payment that we were required to make last year, and then of course, that went out this year. So we just had to deal with the normal increase- of course, that went up this year. So we just had to deal with the normal increase in our pension cost. So the good news on the appropriation side of the budget is spending in, let's say, a county is down $688,000. If there are questions along the way, please feel free to.
Just a quick question. We had talked about this on Freeholders. The state forced us to pay that while at once. That was the arrears on the sheriff's contract, right, which is a large number of employees. So we're now in negotiations with the same groups. We've anticipated that there may be some back pensions, so we're reserving that?
We will, we will now begin to reserve that one as well, Freelord. You know, I guess, you learn by, sometimes taking people at their word, but at the time, we had asked the state how they would deal with that. They told us they would spread out those payments over the length of the time that the contract was, was out of contract, was before years. And then, of course, that didn't happen. We had to bill all of them. But, so we learned by that. Our PBA contracts are out now. This is year two. They expired December of '14. We are in negotiations. I certainly don't anticipate it going four years. Again, anticipate like, hopefully, this summer, we will have a new contract to go. So we'll have to deal with a much smaller retroactive.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some of them are under the same cap, things with unions at the time anyway, right? So their pension is based on salary.
Pension is, right, is based on salary. But remember, over four years, more people retired than hopefully if we settled this contract in the year. And again, going back in time, all the changes were happening. There was a huge exodus of not only law enforcement employees, but all employees because of all the changes in healthcare and pensions alike. So there was a big, a big retirement. So we're certainly not going to be hit with that here. But again, we're going to reserve money in anticipation. There will be some retro pay, a retro pension. Retro pay, that was not an issue. We can always put that on the stack.
About the $5.5 million increase in insurance?
Yes.
Can you just touch on that a little bit, where that's coming from?
Sure. And again, remember, in a row, calendar year 13 and '14, we had two bad insurance years. We're self insured, it's all claims based, we can't control the health of our employees. And we had last year, I believe it was a $4 million emergency. Is that correct? And the year before, I think it was $4.5 million?
Seven?
Seven, seven and a half million? Seven and a half, I understand correctly. We increased that, our appropriation this year. We didn't have the emergency. But of course, even though it was the right number this year, we have to anticipate that, you know, we may need more money moving forward. You'll see a little later on, we talked about some of the things that we're doing. But in all of our collective bargaining agreements, we are making some changes that we're already seeing benefits. We're not allowing new employees to enter the traditional healthcare plan. We have now tied out of network usage to Medicare rate, which prior we paid $100 per dollar. And we talked about some of those. Many centers where people were going for knee replacements, we were getting bills for $90,000. If they got to St. Joe's, it would have been $23,000. Again, not really the employees' fault, but, you know, when doctors see what our insurance was paying, you know, and they say to somebody who's having, you know, particularly if it's a knee or something that's posing pain, hey, I can get you in my, you know, my surgery center next week, or we could wait a month to go to St. Joe's. And you're saying, you're gonna go a week, you know. So we're beginning to see that pay dividends already. And every, and again, kudos to the unions. They have all recognized that it's everyone's benefit to begin to make those changes. So I believe, other than the PBAs, I have one more contract that's not law enforcement that I'll be dealing with. And I have not had pushback from any of the terms of agreement to that. So, you know, kudos to them. They recognize that it's an issue. And obviously, you know, we're paying for our insurance now, so it's a benefit to them to try to keep insurance down. And the insurance, just so that... I just wanted to, again, some of that is numbers. Obviously, insurance numbers are big numbers. I just wanted to give you that percentage. Overall, the insurance line was up 7.6 percent. So that, that $5.4 million, that would be about 7.6 percent. Which, again, I think is, in the industry, probably about where it is today. Okay, on the revenue side, you'll see that we are down in revenues this year. Mostly in part because of the change that went into effect July of 2015. I know the freeholders all realize it, but the state of New Jersey went to a managed care system. And this affects our Preakness Healthcare Center facility. So anyone admitted after July 1st of 2015 is now in what they call a managed care system. Though, we negotiate what those rates are now, which are lesser than what we would have gotten under the old system of Medicare and Medicaid. And it's a twofold issue. So we're going to see declining revenues, because obviously, the per day rate is less. What we're also seeing is a cash flow issue. Where the federal government's very good, within 30 days of us billing, we received our check. Now we're dealing with independent managed care carriers, so there is a little longer time. So what we did this year, and again, I think it follows suit of what this board has instructed me to do, is to try to stay conservative. So we reduced what we would normally anticipate from Preakness Healthcare Center from $33 million down to $30 million this year. So that's a $3 million reduction. But that, you know, again, well, I believe that we're going to collect more than $30 million. But it's an opportunity for us to correct something so that two or three years down the road, that we're not faced with our backs against the wall and having to reduce the revenue and everything else that we have to face.
The, I think it was $13 million, that's the amount of money that owed us, was a Medicaid reimbursement, that Christie and the state is holding up, and said they don't want us to do. Has that been resolved yet?
It has not. In fact, I just, as the freeholders know, we've had multiple meetings. We've had meetings with Senate Chair's office, meeting with Congressman Pascal. We've gone to Trenton to meet with the Commissioner. I just spoke to Assad at Congressman Pascal's office last week. They, the most that they will tell us is that they agree with the Inspector General report that there is, that there is money owed. Though, they won't tell us how much they think it is. Clearly, they don't think it's $13 million, but they think it's a number. We're having difficulty trying to move off of that. That's the last correspondence the Congressman's office has had with them. So Assad said that we may need to bring that to the next level and have the Washington office begin to apply pressure from down there. But you're right, by... The Inspector General's report says it's $13 million. So until someone to tell us that it's not, I think our position is, you know, listen, at least give us an update. And, you know, let's argue back and forth as to why we believe it's $13. You know, you believe it's $100,000. But clearly, it seems like it's a number, Freelord. We just can't seem to get somebody to move and do that. But as recently as last week, I was in contact with Assad. And hopefully, we will get some movement on that. But that is a lot of money, and certainly is, you know, money that the taxpayers deserve. So on the revenue side, and regarding the other, the other decrease in revenue on the drawing capital. Okay, the capital surplus, right, which was $2 million last year, and we're not anticipating anything this year. So those are the big issues. But overall, overall, this was a good revenue year. Our real estate transfer fees, our parks fees, our site management fees, our road opening permits, everything seems to be moving in the right direction. You know, obviously, the economy is getting better. Certainly not near where it was wanting to be. But there are signs that this economy is beginning to grow, which, again, is only gonna help us moving forward as these revenues continue to, remember, 2007, we had $9 million worth of real estate transfer fees. We dropped down to less than $2 million. A lot of money to have to make up in a budget. But we're, again, this year, I think we, I think it was about $3.5 million, $3 million of real estate transfer fees. So we're starting to see, you know, that tick up. So, you know, the signs are there. Clearly, you never come out of these things as fast as you can wind them. But there are positive signs. Our appointment rate is beginning to drop. So there are good positive signs that, again, moving forward future years, it's gonna benefit, the county for safety, and benefit the whole budget process.
To your director, considering the, going back to $13 million, and we're negotiating back to the call negotiation, at what point, because I believe that this governor tried to run the clock out on that money, whether or not he's going to, you know, agree to pay anybody that. I mean, that's my personal belief. But at what point, or is litigation in fact an option?
Well, I think we have to, we have to get an answer, right? And that was my conversation with Assad. You know, what we really need is an answer. If they say it's zero, if they tell us they say it's zero, and then, you know, the board can have a discussion as to what the next step is. If it's $10 million, and, you know, they give us good valid reasons that why it's $10 million and not $13 million, maybe it satisfies everybody and we accept it then. But until you, you know, until you get a number, until you get an answer, like I said, whether it's zero or whether it's, but we need that number in order to make that next step. I think what's going on right now, this is a negotiation between the federal government and the state government. And until they can come up to some meetings in the mind, they're reluctant to, to say much more than that. It's only my sense. No one, no one has debated that.
100% of the money, this is not state money, 100%.
Well, right, but it, but it has, but it's the state, it's the state that we're saying didn't, you know, didn't have the correct formula, right? So federal money that passes through the state, then passes through us. But it's, you know, the OIG report was that the state formula was incorrect. So that's why, no one has said it to me, but I believe that's the, that's the kind of negotiation going on right now, between the federal government and the state government.
And that money is in the hands of the state this time, or has it been drawn down by the state from the bed?
Well, I can't tell you where the money is. It shouldn't, I mean, if they didn't, if they didn't give it to, and this is not just the St. County, by the way, this is a statewide issue, right? Theoretically, it should be in the coffers. Is it? I'm sure that's where the rubber's gonna meet the rope.
I can tell you where the money isn't, and it's not in the pockets of the St. County taxpayers where it belongs.
That, right, and I think that much we could say would, would, we'd...
And I appreciate, to the chair, that the Freelord, we need to make sure that we're prepared to get out there on behalf of the taxpayers, and get out the money. More than that now, that the government, the government.
Yeah, like I said, Assad is gonna see, he's obviously gonna speak with Congressman Pascal, push this down to the Washington office, see if they can apply pressure down there. And then, once, the chair wants to get an answer, then at least you can have an impolite conversation as to, you know, whether it's worth litigation, whether it's accepting what they say it is, or, or, but until we have those, you know, until we have something, it's hard to go with the next step.
To the director, I just wanted to, I want to see, I believe the administrator has had communications with representatives from other counties that are also owed money. This wouldn't just be the St. County that are considering litigation. This would be a partnership. Is it safe to say that? But if I may, before, because I want to take advantage of the fact that our students are here, Mr. Administrator, if you can, just explain why is this important? How does this impact us? We don't get this $13 million, $10 million, $6 million. We continue our budget. But if we did get it, what would be the impact on the budget to the county business? Why is this even important?
Well, it could be important for a lot of reasons. It could reduce the tax impact of any single budget. It could be used for services that the freeholders need in order to this county, whether it's, you know, fighting the heroin epidemic that we had, whether it's trying to create new jobs, you know. There's, there's just a ton of things that you can do with that type of money. I mean, listen, it's, this is not our money, right? This is the taxpayers' money. We, the taxpayers have paid this 13, or have not received this $13 million. And we believe they're entitled to it. So, yeah, it's a, it's a major impact. You know, it, you could, you could beg some of the money, you could reduce taxes with some of the money, you could create programs that will benefit the county. You know, there are plenty of places where work on a shoestring, right?
No, no, that, the chair, we pay how much for the trash program that we inherited every year?
Four...
$38 million a year.
Not, not a year, but it's 4.4 million, four...
I'm sorry, 38 years.
38 years. Right, utilities are already, 4,250.
But again, this is a Medicaid reimbursement. So this has everything to do with the services that are already provided under Medicaid, including our hospitals. So, you know, it's, they're moving to managed care, but they're holding back the money that we are, we're owed for providing the services that we already provide. Makes no sense.
Nothing. Whether it's your personal life, somebody owes you money, whether you need it or not, they owe you the money, right? I mean, it's, if they owe us the money, and this is not the St. County saying, and this is the Office of Inspector General of the federal government, who did the audit report and said that the state of New Jersey did not disperse this money correctly. And just going back to the Freeholders, when we had, when we had with, with the federal government, representatives of the federal government, with Congressman, we had Monmouth County, and Hudson County, us, and then we had Union County. So, and those were, you know, just before then to make the meeting, but it affects other counties as well.
If I can, to your director, if I can just correct a little of my statement, I said $38 million. In fact, we'll be paying $4.5 million till 2038.
Correct.
And we're in 2016 now, so do them that, and realize just how much money we have to lay out.
Well, you know, had to go back, because we've been paying it since the 90s, right? So it's not only the, you know, it's not only the ball, we've been paying it, you know, since, since the 90s.
We have nothing for it.
Right, since, since the 90s. Which, which, again, I, you know, I think says so much about where the St. County is today. And I always say that you can't, you know, just look at today if you don't know the history of, of what was inherited here, whether it was the fact that we let roads and bridges deteriorate. We have so many buildings that, you know, are in disrepair and should have been repaired and, and, and weren't. So, you know, I know sometimes, not sometimes, I know all the time, you know, boards be criticized for raising taxes. But, you know, you're not raising taxes because you want to raise taxes. We're raising taxes because, you know, we had infrastructure that needed repair. I mean, we had roads that were deformed, that, you know, and when I got here, it was probably the single big email that I received every day about conditions of roads, you know, bridges. I mean, we like to say that, you know, we are on top of all of our bridges. I know we went out today for the Eighth Street Bridge project. We went, we took biz today on that. But we are aggressively fixing bridges and forward. You know, we're doing great work. And we're in a position now where, yeah, did we have to spend more than anybody ever wants to spend? Sure. But we're putting the St. County in a position now, in protecting this budget, and particularly that, and prove that, includes financial grant, right? So we've, we've caught up with paving our roads, right? Now we're, quite frankly, struggling to find roads that need repainted. You know, I, I remember when we first started asking towns for, you know, we engaged the towns, how much road roads you want to, Freelord Bartlett, I'll use your town as an example. You know, I'd get a list of virtually every county road. Now they struggle to top of a single road. And, you know, again, I think that says something to this board and prior boards, that... And, you know, again, I think that says something to this board and prior boards, that, you know, we recognize that you have to do it. People forget, you know, we have 317 Pennsylvania, you know, the cost of keeping that building open, that building was supposed to be decommissioned, but the building we're sitting in was open. Unfortunately, you know, they didn't plan well, and we had that building that 20 years ago had reached its end of its useful life, and it's still there today. We're, we're getting closer to being able to, to get that off of our books and put that back on the factuals and see some redevelopment back there. But, you know, those are, you know, those are the things that sometimes people don't recognize and don't understand, you know, where this county was and where we are here at. And, you know, I think you all should be very, very proud of it, and I know you're the ones on the front line, and you have to go out there and you have to hear about taxes all the time, but, you know, it, it's not just taxes and we're not seeing it. You know, we have made taxes prudent in this county, and, you know, I know you're all proud of it, I certainly am proud of it. You know, taxes is not something you ever convince anybody that, you know, that they're going to like, but where we were and where we are is tremendous, and, and we are beginning to see the fruits of those labors, and I think this budget is the beginning of it. Anything else? So we're talking about, you know, how do we get to these places? One of the things we, we have done is streamlined county government, you can see how over the last really four or five years that our, that our number of employees is hovering around that 1,800 mark, 1,830, we're at 1,843 today, but again, going back in history, back in 2006, we were at 2392. So, I mean, a significant difference. We recognize that difficult decision for that board at that time, I guess only through the Department of Commerce and James on the board at that time, we had to make that difficult decision and do layoffs, never easy to do, probably the most distasteful thing I have done, considering this job, but, but again, something that had to get done, and we're still providing the services with far less employees. Again, fund balance, structural balance, it's what we strive for, and you'll see how fund balance is, you know, continually to creep up. We were kind of stable this year, we have a little bit more fund balance, we're using another $1 million fund balance in this year's budget, but sets us on solid foundation moving forward for those rainy days, right? So, we had, when we were in the midst of the worst economic time, and you go back to 2008, on this slide, you see we only had a fund balance of $18 million, so it really, it really made our job more difficult, you know, so putting money away for that rainy day, it's also helped us with the rating agencies, but it, it just goes to the whole conservative budgeting process and doing the right thing. As you know, we have the highest credit rating in our, in our history, Sandin, of course, has rated this as a double A with a stable outlook. The way they describe double A on their website is very strong capacity to meet financial commitments. The stable outlook reflects our assessment of the county's sound finances, conservative budgeting, and established contingency plans, county maintenance, and what we consider manageable debt contributes to the stable outlook. You know, they had all those things, nothing happened by accident, right? So these are all conscious decisions that we have made over the years to get us to this point. Sometimes it's more difficult than others, but it is paying off, and it's paying off tremendously, and we are, you know, we are seeing, when we go out and sell county bonds, not only are we seeing the best interest rates on those bonds that we've ever seen, but the competitiveness of, and of, of the number of institutions that are bidding on this, it is unbelievable. I mean, I think the last bond sale, we had five or six institutions competing, sometimes we would have two, three, sometimes you'd knock enough doors just to get somebody interested in the State County. So obviously, the more people interested in it, the better our rates are going to be. And why are they interested in it? Because they see the State County's stability, they see our good financial ground, yet nothing happens by accident. So again, a little bit about what Sandin, of course, says, diverse property tax base tariff authorized by strong wealth and stable income, conservative budgeting, solid fund balance, flexibility, 2% property tax, low overall debt, with a manageable five-year capital plan, and formalizing policies on debt and fund balance utilization. So a few years back, this board adopted a policy that we would only incur $10 million a year in authorized debt, and that we would never use more in fund balance in the budget that we thought we could regenerate the following year. And again, that has worked tremendously, and the rating agencies have praised us for it. So, you know, why is, why are we so proud of that here at the State County? Well, when you look at the state of New Jersey, they received a ninth downgrade in 2005, from A1 to A2, and again, not, we're not here to, you know, overthink, we're in the eye of the state of New Jersey, but again, I think it just goes to what we have tried to do here at the State County and do the right thing, even when it means making some very difficult decisions. Talked before about the collective bargaining agreements, you know, we've established a pretty good pattern with our labor unions, 2% increases, I mean, talked about changing some of the healthcare options, tying out of network usage, Medicaid reimbursement, we have, we've negotiated away holidays coming up on Lincoln's birthday, other than the contracts that I still have out, every other, every other collective bargaining agreement no longer has on Lincoln's birthday. I always like to say that anything that we have ever done at the table with the unions, the non-union employees have done first, so I never asked the unions to do something to give something back that I wasn't willing to do myself, and we have done that much to support some of the people that are back here, but it's the right thing to do. And again, I, you know, we have 23 different collective bargaining agreements, and I have to say, they have all gotten it, and they have really been a partner at the table. You know, you're, you're at the service sitting across the table, and you have your back and forth, but at the end of the day, it really has been a relatively easy process because they really do get it. And, you know, listen, it's about jobs, and it's about being able to afford the workforce that we have, and, you know, as I always say, you know, the unions could be your best ally in those situations, and the unions that we have dealt with have lived up to that. So, bottom line, this year, the tax levy is up 1.66%, that's the lowest tax increase in 16 years. Rich, I think that equates to a $5.5 million increase over last, last year's level. And that concludes my wonderful presentation. Anyone wants to applaud?
Thank you, Governor Wilson. Round of applause, please. Would I have any additional questions for Administrator Seaduck?
For you, Director, I just wanted to point out, that's one question, but as I look at this number, taxes up 1.66% this year. This is now my fourth year on the board, my fourth budget, and we certainly were criticized last year when we had to increase our tax levy by about 4.9%, but what's clear is that that was an outlier, that was not part of a story, part of a trend, that was a response to two years of terrible costs in terms of medical, as well as the unexpected state obligation of paying four years of pension areas all at once, well, the $4 million. So we were caught in that situation last year, and we were, increased taxes, so what's clear, thinking back to my first year, 2013, was 1.87%, this year was 1.66%. As you say, you know, we're on strong financial footing, and I think that's something that should always be noted as we talk about.
All right, Mr. Administrator, I know that certain decisions made by the state, I don't know if we would say they're dragging their feet, $13 million may be appropriate to describe it that way, adversely impacts our budget, but certain decisions from the state, you might just say, actually positively impact us, like recent decisions regarding generic prescription drugs for jails with awarding association of bail reform. Can you speak a little bit to anything that you see coming out from the state that's actually beneficial to the county, or anything that you're looking forward to continuing negotiating, especially since, and I would like to point out, you made quite a few trips to the state to speak on behalf of legislations or bills that can impact our budget. So I know those were too many to keep in mind, but anything else?
You know, Senator Sweeney made his tour of the state of New Jersey recently, and met with counties, heard what some of our concerns were, as you know, Senator Sweeney was a Freeholder for many, many years, so he has a passion for county government, he also understands that, what our challenges are. A few of the things that the Freeholders at that meeting had raised, one in particular, without going into the details, I think certainly, well documented in the record, was our issue with our superintendent of elections, the ability for her to negotiate a collective bargaining agreement about at least having a county as her partner, as done in all previous superintendents, as a partner at the table. So one of the pieces of legislation now will require the superintendent of election, she can still negotiate her own contract, but it will now have to be ratified as well by the Department of Freeholders. So really, in essence, what the legislation is going to do, I hope, is we will be at the table as partners to negotiate future contracts, because it, it will make no, no sense for some of the negotiated contracts that, listen, I, I couldn't even imagine a union would want to sit down with somebody who didn't have the ability to ultimately ratify the collective bargaining, right? So I, I, I'm hoping that that piece of legislation will bring us to the table together and be partners, because, you know, listen, we're all, we all should be on the same side on this issue. So that piece of legislation that we advocated for was, 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 passed by both the Senate and the House, it was a bipartisan bill, and then ultimately signed by the government. So we have that piece of legislation. Then there is also a second piece of legislation, which didn't come out of our conversation, though I think it, you know, I think it started, we started the conversation with another county that kind of jumped on that, was limiting the constitutional officers to a 2% increase, so that they're kind of responsible, held to the same accountability we are with, with budgeting. Now, there are, there are amendments to the bill, it will exclude elected laws, it won't start until 2017, the bill got a little bit watered down, so, you know, which is uncommon in the Trenton role, but, but, but it does have an effect and will have an effect, as I said, there's, there's certain things, I, I have not seen the final piece of legislation, but there are some areas that would allow them to go more than 2%, so not unlike our cap with our exclusions to the cap, there will be exclusions to that 2%, but that was another piece of legislation. I know I'm probably forgetting one of the, was there any? One of the ones that we had spoken about that unfortunately, last the Assembly didn't pass, the Senate, was increasing fees in the court system to offset our cost of maintaining the courthouse. However, we just recently had a, a meeting with the governor's office on this bail reform, criminal justice reform, I think that they're calling it now, and they are very interested in tying that legislation to offset some of the cost of bail reform, which I think we were alluding to earlier. And that, at least in the State County, that's one of those pieces, that, that, that's a piece of legislation that has a different meaning to every county, you know, it's not going to be the same for every county, but here in the State County, we struggle with our jail, right? We, we need to get our population down. So, and we have already seen the benefits early on. We were, the last census report, I think that I sent you, we were about 850 inmates in our jail. A year ago, we were over 1,000, maybe a closer to 1,000. So we're beginning to see that, that ultimately, at some point in time, you don't pay dividends. You can't quantify, you know, if there's a healthy inmate, right, so you're paying nothing for medical, if we have an inmate who had a serious disease that required $10,000. So it's not as though I could quantify that 300 less inmates means we save, you know, 300 times 197 dollars, which is the cost, but there's a savings, you know, there is a benefit by having less people in our jail. Clearly, I mean, you know, it's, it's less instances, it's less liability issues, it's less food, and it's a whole hostless thing. And our assignment judge, who has really been terrific, a great partner, a great ally in all of this, I mean, he believes that once this bail reform goes into full swing, once the trial, which, which I believe begins this January 17th, goes into full swing, that we could see another 20% reduction in our jail hospital, which will just be fantastic. So there are some positive things coming, coming out of Trenton, I think, Freeholder. Certainly, I didn't mean to just paint a, a negative, but there are, there are some positive things coming out of Trenton.
Was there anything else?
Okay, Director, I just want to say, I want to thank Mr. DeMille in this budgeting. I've been budget chair for about six years now, and I've been able to watch what goes on behind the scenes. To your point, if the public doesn't know what goes on, you folks put a budget together, you start working on a budget, you're not just thinking about that one year, you're just not planning for that one year. When you put the numbers together, you're already thinking ahead, how it's going to affect the county two, three, four years down the road. In the past, it was easy to put budgets together, not that this board was guilty of it, but in the past, budgets were put together with gimmicks and tricks, and, but sooner or later, you know, you had faced the, faced the music on that. And this, this budget team, under your direction here with Winova, has done an outstanding job, you're, I believe you're one of the partner reasons why we, we have the credit rating that we have, because the people who watch what goes on here, and who put together these, these forecasts or the ratings, understand what we're doing here, and I applaud what you do, I applaud, I applaud the department heads.
All right, thank you very much, Freeholder before. You really, you are the people that deserve this credit, because, you know, it's easy for me to come to you and say, this is what has to be done, you know, I'm not the one that has to go out there and face the public and, and have to answer all of those questions. But, but this board and, and previous boards have recognized the fact that, you know, you can't do it with gimmicks, you know, you can't just, you know, you can't reduce taxes, and, you know, some of my, some of my colleagues in other counties, it's a lot different, right? And, you know, there's, there's some counties that, you know, pound with their chest that they haven't raised taxes in four years, but they haven't cut spending, right? They're, they're, they're using what I would call input to, to, to achieve that. And this board, or, or previous board has always, you know, has always frowned upon that, and when I have come to you, and as difficult as last year was, and that, and that was, that was just, you know, a real kick in the butt last year, when we get that bill at the last minute and we had to deal with that. But, you know, it wasn't, and, and Director, at the time, you know, I, I thought you really said it well, that, you know, you're, you're proud of the budget, and I think we were proud of that budget because we didn't try to do something just based on the next election or, and, you know, you want to, you know, while easy to do, and we maybe would have made elections easier, it wasn't the right thing to do, right? And I, I know, I always share that, that folk, that, you know, the difference between politicians and statements is the politician's only thinking about the next election, but the statesman is thinking about the next generation. And, and that, you know, is a clear example of this board's direction to me, and allowing me to come to you, and, and, you know, or, or, you know, you not coming to me and saying, hey, listen, I don't care what you have to do. I don't care what you have to do, I don't want to see an increase this year. Because, you know, you can do that, but it would be fooling ourselves, and more importantly, we'd be fooling the taxpayers. And at some point in time, that's going to come back to bite you. So, you know, while I appreciate the Freeholder for really, you know, the applause, applause really goes to Freeholder for it, and your dedication to this county. So, thank you.
Thank you. There's no further questions? I'm going to ask Mr. DeNova to join us back at the dais, and we'll have our review of our consensus agenda. I have a pen, one, who entered the box, are there any questions on those? There's no questions there, or a council for any late starters?
Mr. Director, we, the Floyd, the original late starter, Art Well, who has a presentation due on January 6th, Floyd, we know that Duffy herself, the full community board, statutorily, and that for the state, you are more than that, the director, a member of the late board. You know, I was requested to do a late starter, making that resolution, placing you on the pressing board, and designating a freeholder, was that as the board that, yeah, the board gathered, I mean, I have a number of references.
Okay, great. Is there a need for a deck of session?
No, there is no need for a deck of session.
Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Over.
Moved by freeholder James, second by freeholder Duffy, roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet, Director Best.
Yes. Okay, before we start our meeting again, is the bus coming in seven?
Yeah.
Okay, you know, we're going to take a five-minute recess, allow our students to exit, and we'll reconvene after that, okay? Thank you.
James, Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura, Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. Are we, do we have any freeholder reports? There's a couple. Go ahead, John.
Director, just very briefly, I want to mention to all my colleagues and everyone else, that although next Monday, President's Day, two Mondays from now, 22nd of February, is the grand rededication of the DiManion重建, that's been an ongoing project, the mansion's been closed for about a year and a half now, renovating and restoring its historic interior roof, and we're also, although this part isn't completed, putting together a visitor center with modern facilities and so forth. The DiManion was General George Washington's headquarters for the military camp in New Jersey in July, October, and November of 1780. It is where George Washington changed history and planned the winter campaign of 1780, 1781. So, it's a very proud thing to have here in St. County, and I'm very pleased to have our clerk of the board, Lou Imhoff, and an excellent team of folks who have formed a committee and are putting together quite a fun, exciting day of activities on Monday the 22nd. Information is on our website and on Facebook as well, but I wanted to extend the invitation to everyone, activities towards being in a 10:00 AM special dedication ceremony in June, and activities towards the DiManion continue for 2:30 PM on Monday, the 22nd of February.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Or any other?
This will be very quick, I just want to remind us that time of the year, one of the most exciting programs we all get to be a part of is the St. County Film Festival, so I want to remind people to begin excited about the submissions, and maybe we'll go see them at the theater each year. It's been a really great event for us, and I know that many of the freeholders have been there, and I've seen Freeholder for consistently there, and it's so exciting, along with the rest of our colleagues, to see the young people in their submissions, so really excited, really excited about that, and they're offering, you know, they're doing a really great job with that, and I think we're going to have more submissions this year than previous ones. That's what I'm watching.
Thank you. And on, at our next freeholder meeting, following the DiManion rededication, on February 23rd, Tuesday, we're going to have our annual Black History Month celebration. We're really excited, we have some performers coming from both the St. County Tech, as well as those of El Park School of Fine and Performing Arts here in the City of Patterson. We have several honorees, we're honoring Angela Crockett, who is actually my former teacher, she's my eighth grade teacher, and I'm going to recite the poem that she taught me that I still remember. We're honoring Nancy Greer, Honorable Judge Michael Schiff Esquire, Tyrone Smith II, Wayne Witherspoon, Ashley Yolanda Lipscomb, okay, and Mr. Russell Grady from the world famous Mr. Dree's Restaurant in the City of Patterson. Also, we will have some special soul food catered by my very own family, who's coming out to cook a phenomenal meal for everyone in attendance, they could really throw down, and hope to see everybody at our next meeting. Staff, you are welcome to enjoy the food as well, okay? Any other announcements? Great. Entertain a motion to approve communications or remove communications? Luke, do you want to, want to read the communications, or you want to move? No, that's fine. Okay. Okay. The Borough of Hawthorne passed a resolution, MR. 0216, on January 20th, 2016, that through the County of Passaic Open Space Fund, has provided to the Borough of Hawthorne funds to utilize to pay for a major portion of the van shell being constructed at the Hawthorne Municipal Pool Complex. Second is the Palestinian Children Care, requesting to hang a banner across Main Street by the corner of Crooks Avenue in the City of Patterson to promote their event for peace on Sunday, March 6th, 2016. Entertain a motion to approve communications. Moved by freeholder James, second by freeholder Duffy, roll call.
Freeholders Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. Entertain a motion to open public portion?
Second.
Moved by freeholder LaFour, second by freeholder Duffy, I will, roll call.
Freeholders Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. I ask anyone from the public who would like to speak, to please approach the microphones, you have three minutes.
See no one at the podium in my booth.
Just want to let you know that everything you say is a part of the public record.
Good evening, everybody, St. County Freeholders. My name is Lorenzo Carpenter, the Executive Director of the Grandparent Health Care, Senior Community Resource Center located in the City of Patterson, 257-259 Rosa Park Boulevard. I stand here on behalf of the center to say humbly, thank you very much for your contribution. I thank you from the bottom of my heart, our center is grateful for your help and your continued support. We would just like to say, during the elections, you said you can do what you can do to help us out. It's not talk. You guys showed up, you did your job, and you stuck by your guns. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Me and Ms. Wahida and the Grandparents Center are overwhelmed by your contribution and your continued support. So, once again, I'd just like to say thank you very much to everyone up there, thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, good evening. I just want to say, you know, my mother always taught us, when someone does something good, you should always let them know that, because when they don't, they will be more willing to listen to you if you're going to tell them what they did or did not do. So, I just want to say to you, former Director Hector, and Deputy Director Bartlet, and also Sandy, when you guys were running and you came out grand opening, and you said whatever it was that you could do to help, you would be willing to do that. And I know you got a lot of fight at the council meeting because people said it was just a grandstand, it was promising things, and things were not going to happen. So, I want to come and say that we know now that you said what you meant, and you meant what you said, and we just want to say thank you. Not only because we still have our hand out, but we want you to know that we thank you for putting what you did in our hands. And we want to say big shout-outs to your Director Pam Owens and her assistant, Mr. Charles Federson, because they hit the ground running to help us to get whatever we were supposed to get to you, to see what it was that you all could do to help, and you did that. So, we really want to say that. And believe me, when I leave here, I will go to the city council meeting and let them know, you were not just talking, you did what you said you were going to do, and we really appreciate that. So, we wanted to stop by today to say to you, we thank God for you, and we're here to help wherever we can, but we do want you to continue to know that we still need your help, okay? So, but I want to thank you for what you've done, and what you continue to do. And my friend here, who always comes forward and helps me whenever I call on him, Freeholder Duffy, and LaFour, whenever I call on you guys, and my other husband over there, Freeholder Bruce, we thank you for what you do, and your Director, who always tells everybody that we used to be friends, but I still thank you, Director TK, I thank you for what you do, and I know that you're going to continue to help us, because I know Dr. Jesse talks to you too, so I know that you're going to continue to help us and do whatever you can to help that center too. Do what it's doing, and you've seen the evidence, so I know that you know we are doing what we said we were going to do, okay? Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want you to write on it, you hear what she just said to me?
See no one, move to close public portion.
Moved by freeholder Duffy, second by freeholder Lazara, roll call.
Freeholders Duffy, James, Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. And again, we want to thank you for coming out to our meeting and keeping us on track and on point. We are, if we're still friends, you know, the invitation has always been there, I didn't have, you're the one who retracted it. So, Freeholder Best is, or Freeholder Worst, as you like to call them, is always here to support you. And again, I just want to say to the community, the Grandparents Organization in the City of Patterson, who serves the entire county of Passaic, and actually parts of Bergen County too, is doing a phenomenal job, you can follow them on Facebook and see their pictures, through their partnership, the New Jersey Food Bank, on the days where they get their deliveries, how they have lines literally three blocks long of people who are desperately in need of food and clothing, as well as services, and they're out there with them in the cold, making sure that their families are fed and supported, and that's really God's work that you're doing, and we thank you so much. And again, we're here to support you, I know Pam and Charles worked with you last year, and they'll continue to work with you, as so will all of us. Anything else?
Yeah, I think one thing, you know, we've been married a long time now. I, you know, I'm in my 11th year of sitting up here. Never has anybody come to us and done what you, Lorenzo, and you did tonight, so I really appreciate it. You know we have a passion for creating and keeping programs in our own communities, and you'll see that moving forward. Sandy is the Chair of Human Services this year, and Hector's on it, and I'm on it, and we've already had discussions, we're going to take a long, hard look at the kinds of programs we fund, and what the result of those fundings have been, but we all have a mindset, and you know us, to keep particularly nonprofits in our county seat, in our poorer communities alive and helping. You make it easy, because what you're doing is proving that community groups that are in the community care the most and do the better work. So, I appreciate what you're doing, because it's really helping all of us, it really is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Captain, you have a second?
Great. Entertain a motion to add N56 to the conference agenda, consented, general speaking.
Second.
Moved by freeholder Duffy, second by freeholder LaFour, roll call, please. Oh, sorry, freeholder Lazara.
Freeholders Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. Entertain a motion to approve resolution N56?
Second.
Okay. Moved by freeholder James, second by freeholder Duffy, roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. Motion made by freeholder Bartlet, second by freeholder James, roll call.
Freeholders Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. Motion made by freeholder Bartlet, second by freeholder James, for bills, roll call.
Freeholders Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. Motion made by freeholder, Deputy Director Bartlet, second by freeholder James, roll call, please.
Freeholders Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. Motion to receive Department reports?
Received and filed.
Thank you. Motion to entertain adjournment?
Move. Second.
Moved by freeholder LaFour, second by freeholder Lazara, roll call.
Freeholders Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Best.
Yes. Thank you all for coming out, God bless, good night, see you on the 22nd of February.